Chair Hagerty is not here this evening, so I get the privilege of chairing the meeting. This is my first time, so please be patient. Nancy, would you do the roll call?
I will. Ms. Austin?
Here.
Mr. Adams? Camille Keys is absent. Chair Hagerty is absent. Mr. Montiel?
Here.
Stephen is not here yet. Mr. Kaplan?
Here.
Mr. Martinez?
Present.
And Acting Chair Hubka?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Standing. The second order of business is the approval of minutes from the May 21st, 2024 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, who was the first? Okay, thank you. And then second by Mr. Adams? Okay?
Yes, would you take the vote?
Okay. Ms. Austin?
Abstain.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Aye.
Mr. Kaplan?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Abstain.
And Acting Chair Hubka?
Aye.
Just passed. Okay. Very good.
And the third order of business is to appoint Noah?
Noah. Mr. Kaplan?
Mr. Kaplan, as a rep from an alternate member to a regular member. Do we have a motion to appoint him?
So moved.
And second, anyone? I guess I can second, can't I?
Yeah, we need to second.
I second that.
Yep.
And Nancy, please take the vote.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Abstain.
You can actually vote. So yes?
Abstain is fine.
Okay. Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
And Acting Chair Hubka?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And we do not have any online public for public comment.
Okay, so we'll skip item number four, public forum. No one's here to speak. And we'll go right to number five, home occupations. And Brian, you were going to give us a staff report? Oh. Where, who? Okay. Please go ahead, speak up.
So it's been a while since I've been over here, but I'm Will Charles, a planner two with the city. And so tonight, yeah, we're going to talk about home occupation regulations. So just to kind of make sure everyone's on the same page, so far, we had a council communication asking about home occupation regulations. And so we brought for this presentation, as well as the staff report that was provided for you to city council for a study session last month. So this is kind of the second step in getting y'all's input as well to these home occupation regulations. And then after this, we'll be also going to a couple of neighborhood nights and getting some public input as well. But yeah, so getting into this presentation. So currently, the home occupation regulations are kind of summarized in these four bullet points. So they are in all of the districts besides the MUB districts and the I districts. They're allowed as accessory uses to residential uses. Home occupations also are regulated by eight performance standards, which we'll look at. And then they do not require a separate permit by the community development department, so they only, the only method we have for reviewing these is when they apply for a business license, we'll verify that they meet the home occupation regulations, but there's no separate use permit or variance or anything of that that they have to go through. And then additionally, there are nine uses that are expressly prohibited in the code. So these ones, regardless if they can meet all of the performance standards, are still a prohibited use as a home occupation. All right, so this is the first four of the criteria. So the first one, pretty self-explanatory. A home occupation has to be on a property with a residential dwelling as the principal use. The next one is that from the outside of the structure, it needs to look like a residence. So it shouldn't look like a business. It should look like, it should look like any other residence on the street. Third being employment. So anyone who lives in the house, as well as one non-resident employee, can work there. And then the fourth one is that the activity shall be operated within the dwelling unit for no more than 50% of the space and no outdoor use, with the one exception being for home care accessories. So if you have, you know, an at-home nurse coming or something like that, you can go in the backyard. But for all other uses, it has to stay inside the dwelling. So no growing vegetation outside or, you know, any sort of like landscaping and that kind of things of that nature. The next ones, so traffic, the, you know, amount of traffic that's generated should be, you know, limited and only one person at a time. So we found that this sometimes limits things, like if you wanted to do like a small yoga class or, you know, art painting, something like that. If you have more than one employee or more than one customer at a time, those would be prohibited based on this standard. Next one is sale of merchandise shall be limited to items that have been made, grown, or prepared on-site. And then next one being basically to limit those nuisances so they're not going onto neighboring properties. And then the last one being you're allowed signage up to two square feet in any zone district except for the R1A. All right. Getting into those prohibited uses, so again, these are ones where even if they could meet those previous eight criteria, these would still be prohibited. So the first one being any sort of like animal care, so that could be anything from like a doggy daycare to, you know, a pet grooming business, anything like that, those would all be prohibited under this. Next one being any sort of hairdresser barber, have anything to do with, you know, haircutting or nails or skincare or anything like that. Automobile sales and repair. Next one, anything to do with the sale or assembly of weapons of any sort, so knives, guns, anything of that nature. Five being food or beverage services. So this one is, think of it more like restaurants. That's what's prohibited in this. So that's food or beverage services, like, yeah, that type of food or beverage service. Next one being any use involving storage, operation, or parking of equipment in large vehicles. Then the, you know, next one, no hazardous materials, then no marijuana uses, and then no manufacturing of wine, distilled spirits, or malt beverages. All right, so that was what is currently in the code today. These are just a couple of things while doing our research for these, this presentation that we kind of found are an issue with the current code. And honestly, we looked at probably 20 or so other communities, and our code is pretty much word-for-word verbatim with a lot of what they are. So it's not that we're, the current code is behind or anything like that. It's just these are, you know, things that we noticed. So the first one being that it's pretty similar to what was in the 1955 code with a couple changes. So, you know, allowing for, allowing it to be constructed in accessory buildings, which was done during the code rewrite, allowing for the additional non-resident employee was a new thing. The signage was increased during the code rewrite. And then the other thing is that the prohibited uses have also not really been looked at or changed since the 1985 zoning code. Couple other things, so this one I mentioned kind of earlier on a different slide, but the backyard space for home occupations. So, you know, we've had a couple of people propose like a, you know, growing flowers or things like that to sell out of their homes. And under the current code, those would be prohibited since you can't use your backyard for a home-based business. So, you know, looking at that as far as expanding maybe potentially beyond the home, only home care uses. Then the next one is that the MUB 1 and I districts currently don't allow for home occupations, which for the MUB 1 or the MUB districts, you know, those could have apartments and things like that along Broadway or along Hampden, where potentially, you know, if someone wanted to come in for a home occupation, technically, they're prohibited from doing those. And then similarly, in the I districts, while those don't allow for single-family residential, there are some legal non-conforming residences in that district, which again, also would be technically prohibited from running a home occupation based on the current standards. And then the last is, we found that, you know, there's not a lot of flexibility as far as the requirements go. If you meet seven of them, but don't meet the eighth one, you can't do it. So that's potentially something to look at as well. Okay, so in this, last year, about, about a month before the code rewrite was adopted, the APA or American Planning Association came out with some suggested regulations for home occupations. And these were some kind of guiding lights that they talked about during or in their own research. So the first one being that, you know, a lot of times your prohibited uses and limitations are based on stereotypes rather than the actual impacts they have on the neighborhood. That also that removing restrictions on home occupations are beneficial for historically disadvantaged communities, as well as single-parent guardian households. So those communities are peoples that are not as, not as able to get out of the house as often. So yeah, like a single parent, you know, someone that needs to be at that house most of the time, this allows for them to have those opportunities as well. And then the last one, which I don't necessarily think is an issue for the Inglewood code, but is the prohibition on cottage food operations. So these are, as Brian likes to say, these are the, you know, the things you'd probably see at like a bake sale, those types of foods. So our code technically has those food and beverage services as currently prohibited. So that could potentially be something to, you know, make more clear so that those cottage food operations are allowed. But currently under the code, that food and beverage services is more in line with, you know, restaurant-type uses. All right. And then, so also with the APA best practices, what they suggest is home occupations should have like tiers or categories of intensity and then, you know, be regulated based on those potential impacts. So some categories that they suggest, allowing for more flexibility in the regulations with additional oversight included, would be things like parking employees, signs, and floor area. And on the right, you can see what our current Inglewood regulations are. So, you know, you don't need to do additional parking for these businesses. You can have one non-resident employee, two square feet, and then a maximum of 50% interior space. But allowing for, you know, potentially more in any of those categories, depending on what the level of oversight is. And then lastly, another one of those guiding principles that they suggested is that ensure that home occupations are, regulations are simple, clear, and fair for all segments of the community. All right. So this is the kind of framework that APA suggests for these home occupations. So the first one being a no very low impact uses. These are the, these are kind of the, work from home is kind of the big one for this type of use. So these would be people or persons that work for a different company that isn't like at that home, they're just an employee of, that they're, you know, taking calls from or, you know, they bring their home, their laptop home from work and do work in their office, that kind of use. That's what these no and very low impact uses are. Category B being those low-impact uses. So these are kind of in line with where our code is today. So these are uses where, when you look at the structure from the outside, it all looks like a residence. All the stuff is contained within the residence, and there's not a lot of outside activities, so limited customers, that kind of thing. And then category C being all other home occupations. So these are those ones that potentially, you know, I mentioned a couple of them earlier, but these could potentially be those like, you know, if you had like a yoga class where you had three people come over, or an art, you know, an art painting class, or flowers being grown outside in the backyard. Those kind of uses, and then, you know, still that prohibited uses. And on these three, I'll say that, you know, they list out their kind of suggested level of regulation for them. So that category A are the work-from-home uses, having no real land use permit, they're just, they're just allowed. You don't need to, you don't need to call your zoning department to get approved for this, you just, you just can do it. Category B being those low-impact uses where there's some sort of land use permit required, which is actually more strict than what our current code has. Our current code, like I mentioned earlier, we just utilize the business licensing process to review to make sure they meet those criteria, but there's no extra permit that they need to get. And then these categories C would be ones that would go to a hearing. And our kind of thought on this is that it kind of runs similar to what a conditional use permit would go through, is kind of what the suggested category C administrative review with a hearing would look like. All right, so with that being said, you know, we kind of took a look at it, and this would kind of be, you know, a potential suggestion for what that could look like for Inglewood. So really, the main, big part of it is category A would be a combination of those tier one and tier two uses on the previous slide. So maintaining our same level of review on the uses that are currently allowed, but then potentially having this category B where those uses, you know, that just don't quite meet our criteria, but, you know, aren't necessarily a bigger nuisance to the neighborhood, would have an avenue to come before a public hearing and, you know, state their case. So that, that's kind of our thought, and then also have those prohibited uses, you know, also maintain a criteria, but maybe look at what's on that list and see if there's any you guys want to take off or add or remove or anything like that. All right, so that is it for the presentation. These are four questions we asked a council and also want your input on. And then, you know, obviously happy to take any questions that you have as well.
I was late, but I have a question for you. I've noticed this is a trend because of the work I have, I do currently during the day. We support a few entrepreneurs that are in this line of business. Are you guys benchmarking with other cities to see how they're rewiring the system for these type of businesses?
Yeah, so we did look at the current codes for everyone, you know, generally around us. And for the most part, they're all pretty identical to what Inglewoods is. You know, these, these APA suggested regulations came out in September of last year, so it's still fairly new, so that I don't, we haven't really seen really anyone else, you know, approaching these yet. This mainly came up due to a couple of, I'll call them springtime businesses, where there are things that they want to grow, that kind of prompted this discussion coming up at this point. But I would imagine that potentially some of them would be looking at these as well.
And what I'll say, the biggest difference that we see between different municipalities is the prohibited use list. So in a lot of municipalities in the Denver metro area, hairdressers and salons are allowed to operate inside of a house, but in Inglewood, they're not. But a lot of municipalities allow them to do that. Inglewood doesn't. I don't know if there's other ones that don't, I just know that we don't. But some of the surrounding communities do allow for things like that. Another one, and the one that, I think the reason that we got this question a lot was Denver allows, the city of Denver allows production of produce, they can grow produce outside, which our code prohibits that because there's no part of the business can take place outside. And so there's been, where a lot of questions have come from some of our citizens on being able to operate portions of their business outside. So that's kind of what really spurred a lot of this discussion, and then the inclusion of the new APA rules or best practices.
Well, what's the thought about removing the restriction on MUB? And do other cities restrict those kind of multi-tenant zoning blocks? You know, I'm in MU3 and I'm in a single-family home. And I remember I moved in 23 years ago, and there was a woman moving out on the block because she couldn't do a, I don't know, it was like a tarot business or an astrology business or something. She was very angry. But anyways, is there any thought to removing, do other cities do that?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't know when that, that part, you know, it was in the code before the rewrite as well. And I, personally, I think it's mainly just an oversight is why it's not permitted in those districts, especially the I districts, you know, those ones, you wouldn't, you know, you hear the word industrial district, you don't expect there to be a residence. And so it only impacts a very limited number of residences. And I think it's the same probably for the MUB districts too. You know, those traditionally your, your commercial corridor. And so, yeah, I think, you know, I think for both of those, you know, what you're looking at is apartments and things like that, where, you know, they could run a, you know, a lawyer's office or an accounting office or anything like that, just the same as anyone else could in a single-family residence. The only difference being in the code currently, it has those not listed as allowing for the accessory use.
And then in that scenario, in a multifamily building, the building could have its own rules that would be more restrictive than this. Or would this prohibit an HOA or condo association from?
They could. I will tell you, the governor signed into a law, a bill that prohibits property owner associations from restricting home occupations this last year. Well, one of the best practices says is that you could look at tiering the allowances for some of the more, ones that might be considered more intense, would not necessarily be allowed to be run as a home occupation in a multifamily scenario. So things that might need to occur outside or take up additional space, that would not be allowed in those multi-use, multi-unit scenarios where it might be a little bit more appropriate in a single family. So that's another way to look at it. If it's in an apartment building, maybe only tier A is allowed to operate as a home occupation, not necessarily tier B or tier C, or I think we're just tier A and tier B that we've talked about, but that is another way to take a look at it.
Where would childcare fit in those tiers, you think?
So childcare is currently permitted and as an accessory use. So I would, you know, I would imagine it'd be in the lower impact tier, so the one that doesn't require a hearing. I think, I don't know if it got taken out during the code rewrite, but I think previously in the R1A was a conditional use for childcare, like once you have, I think, like more than four or six people or children at the house. But for the most part, in almost all districts currently, it's an allowed, allowed home occupation.
And, yeah, home care is a totally separate use from the home occupations. That's why it has all those additional kind of carve-outs that say, except for home care uses, except for.
So a home childcare center, the kids can go outside?
That's correct. In fact, I believe that's part of the requirements for a childcare center, is that you have to have like indoor and outdoor activity space. That's why that kind of got, is it.
So what do you think is the logic behind the keeping that or disallowing the haircutting and the personal grooming and that kind of thing?
I don't know. At least being a planner for a few years, a lot of times what you see, things end up getting regulated based on a bad experience. Something occurs in the city, and then there's a regulation that's created for, maybe out of a bad player to part of that. And then now everybody's regulated. I think that's kind of what those stereotypes are talking about, is don't regulate based on one thing, you know, or a stereotypical thought of this land use. You need to make, just create the rules and let everybody operate in, within those rules.
Yeah, and I think I've mentioned this before on other topics, but, you know, zoning practices in the United States have a long history of racist, racism embedded in them as well, and I wouldn't, I would probably see that as potentially one of the reasons for excluding those types of, those types of restrictions in the past.
I think one of our concerns here should be trying to avoid situations where people can, you know, violate the law like inadvertently, right? Trying to make it as clear and as easy and trying to think through, like, what are those situations that people are commonly misunderstanding or, you know? You know, there have been plenty of situations around the country of, you know, police getting involved around kids lemonade stands because of, you know, rules like this, right? So I think I would prefer something that makes clear that, you know, a home use, like you mentioned food and beverage service, the example that you gave was, you know, a bake sale. And there's a difference between a bake sale and running a home bakery, right? And so I think I would like to make sure that wherever this lands, it's clear, you know, what is allowed for those kind of like one-time things, so that you don't have situations where people are doing, you know, my kids, we live near Bellevue Park, and they like to sell lemonade on July 4th. Like, I don't consider that to be a commercial activity out of our house, but technically, maybe it is. So I just want to make sure that whatever, wherever we land on this, that we're not creating traps for people to fall into by doing things that are commonly considered to be okay.
Chair, I just want to point out that both Carl and I have had our lights on for quite a while, waiting for you to call on us, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just. Please, go ahead and say something. I thought you would just speak up, because he did. Go ahead, Carl.
How many do we, is there an actual count on something like this in the city right now?
Give me just a second to look that number up. We've kind of estimated. So what we've done is taking, taken all of the business licenses that are registered in the city, and we cross-referenced those with our zoning maps to see what are located in residential districts. I have that number, give me just a second, I'll pull it up if we want to.
So do they actually have to have a license to operate?
Yeah, so they have a license with our finance department.
So the application of the license will weed out anybody that's like a meth dealer or something?
I mean, the, the finance licenses are more for like tax purposes and things like that, so it's your, you know, your, how you file those. So if someone came in for a meth dealership, we would not approve it.
It's illegal already.
How about the, like across from the King Supers on Broadway, all those businesses, the thrift store, and there's a cop, coffee shop, and the copy shop, copy store, they all have apartments above them. Is that considered in this realm?
Yeah, so those, you know, those apartments that are above, you know, if they were on Broadway and, you know, above a commercial space, that's kind of what I was mentioning with the MUB districts, which is all of Broadway. Those are technically not be allowed to have a home occupation in those, in those dwellings as the current code is today.
So those would be more of a mixed use. So you have a commercial use on bottom. Whoever lives on top may not necessarily work or have anything to do with that use on bottom. Home occupation is you live in a house, you want to run a business out of your house. That's really what we're talking about. The number that I have is about four hundred and twenty home occupations within the city. So we have a lot more than we really thought we did. We have quite a few. But that's where we're at right now is about four hundred and twenty of these different businesses within a city. The other thing that mixed-use districts might have the opportunity to do is folks might have the ability to live in a live-work unit. So most of our residential districts don't allow this land use, but our mixed-use districts do allow live-work. And that would be more of, say, you have that commercial use on the first floor and then that's your business and then you live in an apartment that's attached to that above. I don't know that we have very many examples of that in our community. We might have one or two. But really, we're just focusing on home occupations, what kind of business you run out of your home.
So the four hundred, are, are these all taxable? They pay taxes on whatever they do?
They all have business licenses now. Whether or not they pay taxes, that'd be a question for the finance department. I couldn't answer that one and give you a good answer.
So are we trying to increase that four hundred to five or six hundred for more business in Inglewood or more residents in Inglewood or?
I don't know that we're, as a planning staff, we're not looking at increasing the number so much as we're looking at providing clear and consistent rules across the board to make sure that if somebody is trying to operate a business, they really don't have to call us and ask us to explain to them what they need to do. The rules are just very black and white and say, do these things, follow these rules and you can operate your business. All you have to do is submit something to the finance department for your business license and you can go forward and operate. Or if you're in the second category that Will mentioned where, say, you want to operate a portion of your business outside, then do we tell that person that they need to go to a public hearing in front of this commission? And we have to notice their neighbors. What does that noticing requirement look like? Notice their neighbors, then we hold a public hearing, very similar to what we just did for Lava Island. And then if they're approved, then they can go forward and operate that business in their home.
So they have licenses. Is it required to be obvious when you're in there where whatever they have for consumer?
Business license?
Yeah.
So that'll be another question for finance. From a planning perspective, our rules say that that home needs to look like a home at all times. Like you're not allowed to do any kind of architectural changes to put in like a commercial storefront to make it look more like a business. You can't do that. So our rules say in the, in the zoning rules, it says that your house needs to look like a house, looks like it operates a house. The fact that you run a business out of it, the only way somebody should be able to tell is likely that one little two-square-foot sign up front.
Question?
Yeah, I've got some questions and comments. And thanks for the presentation. The overall thing is, oh, what are we trying to do tonight? Are we just coming in with a list of recommendations to present to city council or is this, I'm just curious what we're supposed to do tonight?
Yeah, so city council did provide us the direction. They did want us to pursue some changes to this. So what we're looking for from you all tonight is also your guidance on what you would like to see changed in this, if anything. And then from there, we're going to do the same with the public as well and do some outreach there before coming back to you all with, you know, some proposed actual changes and, you know, code language and all that fun stuff. So tonight is more, tonight is more about providing direction on, you know, what you like and dislike about the current regulations.
Okay, great. Thanks. That helps me.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, we have another work session that we're planning on coming back to you with before we would come back with an ordinance change. Another group that we're meeting with, and I don't know if you mentioned this, is the Chamber of Commerce next week. So we're trying to meet with a few different groups, not just you all. But ultimately, you guys make the recommendation to council, so you'll have quite a bit of influence on it.
Yeah, and I saw that you're going to three different parks for feedback from the public. So can you explain to me what, what happens now if you're doing a business that is currently against the code? What, what happens to those folks?
Yeah, I mean, so if, you know, if they apply for a business license to open up a business that is currently prohibited for either not meeting the standards or for, you know, being one of the prohibited uses. Essentially, at that point, we tell them that they can't open that, that business. So that, that's where it ends there. You know, the other way that we find out about these is by complaints from neighbors.
Right.
So in that situation, we issued them a notice of violation. So it's basically a letter saying, you know, stop doing, stop doing these, you know, things and, you know, either, either apply for the business license if you, you know, can meet that requirement or, you know, stop doing the business.
Does it happen very often? I'm sure with the code, I mean, I'm guessing most of them come from complaints from neighbors, but maybe I'm wrong.
Not, not a substantial amount, but there are, you know, there are, you know, half dozen or so that come out each, you know, each year, I would say.
Sure. Well, I, I think one of the considerations we should take a good look at is allowing businesses that need to use the outside. It's one thing to be having a childcare and the kids go out for, you know, fifteen minutes in a day. But it's another thing if they're repairing vehicles in the outside. And so I think that whatever we talk about is that we need to understand that some of these businesses do need to be outside, but other businesses basically live outside and we don't want to create standards that, you know, because I know, I don't think anybody wants a miniature, you know, vehicle repair shop next door to them, so.
Right. Yeah, so one of, you know, one of the, kind of going back to the prohibited uses list. So currently, one of the prohibited uses is the automobile sales. So I think what I'm hearing you say is you'd prefer for that one to, to stay on the list?
Yeah, for me, yeah. I, I think that most people really didn't ever think that there might be, you know, a guy repairing motorcycles or trucks and cars and everything right next door to them. I think they would expect that to be in the industrial area, so. And then also, I think I could actually make a case for not allowing childcare in apartment buildings or condos because I just think that the noise factor could be tremendous, but that's just my personal thought. And I don't know how you'd write that into code or anything like that, but that's just a comment from me and what I personally think, so.
Yeah. I think Brian mentioned that there, there might be some outdoor component for, for those that, you know, more.
Were prohibited because they.
Yeah, state regulation.
Apartments don't have lawns and things like that, so.
Yeah, but we can also look into that and make double, double check, but I'm, I'm, yeah. I'm sure you are supposed to.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I think for number five, one of the things, again, going to my own job experience, is to define that one thing we, we should do is define the percentages if we do allow that to be done. Because what happens is you can do a certain amount of percentage of your food and beverage at home and then you have to transfer the rest to the commercial kitchen. And I know there's several commercial kitchens in Inglewood. So maybe we can be a little bit more flexible. Like, hey, you can start with a brownies at home, but you can't have a commercial oven in your garage because that entitles a whole bunch of other code issues. So you'll have to go finish grandma's recipe at a commercial kitchen. And that also supports income for the city because everybody that starts a food business has to get a license and all the rest that comes with that, you know?
Yeah, that's a, a good point. And kind of one of the, I think, if you look at the, the current way that home occupations are regulated, there's kind of this gap in the middle where, you know, you can have a really small business with one employee or less. But then the, the, you kind of have to take a big leap from there to an actual commercial space. And so, you know, I think, I think if we allow some sort of middle ground in there, you know, it potentially opens up some avenues for people to kind of grow into their businesses rather than taking a, you know, a huge, a huge leap at that step in the, in the process. And so that's something we're also wanting, you know, when we talk to the Chamber of Commerce as well is kind of finding a, a good way to facilitate those businesses through those, that transition as well.
Yeah, because all these food businesses usually connect to farmers markets. And, you know, that promotes a lot of city social life or I don't know how you want to define it, you know?
The, the state cottage food laws really spell out like what you can and can't do. The easy way to think about it is you can't do anything that requires refrigeration. And it really is when we say bake sale, it's not necessarily that you're having a bake sale, but what would you take to a bake sale? A cake, a brownie, a cookie. Things like that you can do through cottage food laws. But, you know, making like salsa, you can't necessarily do that because it would require refrigeration. So there's certain things that you can do that the state points out. And what we really feel like would be appropriate for us is just to reflect what the state requirements are to just make it clear. You can't operate a restaurant, but you could do X, Y, and Z. So we really want to point to existing regulations as much as possible when the state or the federal government has them. And so that we're not either duplicating our efforts or confusing people because we've had folks that see food and beverage service and just think, okay, I can't do it. That's not necessarily true. We just want to make sure that it's a lot more clear in our code of what you can and cannot do.
Could that, the food and beverages that maybe the refrigeration takes care of that, but have takeout or eat-in as indicated in there is, because take, takeout, you could, there's probably something you can make to sell and give to people and have them take it out. I don't know what it would be, but sandwiches or something, but.
Sure. I mean, there could be. And what I think the Denver regulations talk about is what you would focus on then is how do the sales operate? So if somebody is baking cakes at their house, would you allow the sales to take place at the house? Do you allow all the sales to only take place off-site at like farmers markets, you know, things like that? So I think that's what we have to be conscious of is if you allow it, now you have to think about the other parts of that business. You know, in most cases right now, we prohibit the sale of anything unless it's grown, produced, or created onsite. So if you're doing a mail order business where I buy things from the internet and then I sell them to you, I can only do that through, basically through the internet or off-site sales. But if I, if I baked my own cakes, I could buy our rules now. I, you could come to my house and I could sell it to you. So that's just kind of the things that we need to think about as we're going through this is each, each one of these uses, those, those eight performance standards were created and they're used almost nationwide, to be honest. Because they're almost the same eight that I used in two different cities in Texas. And they're really just there to try to put this very wide net over as many home occupations as you possibly can without just completely restricting all of that ability.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious about category A, which I feel like, or I'm guessing is probably most of the business licenses in town, you know? It looks very similar if you're just working from home, right? You work for a company downtown and you work from home half the day. Very similar from that to you're a consultant, you have your own business, your own LLC that's registered to your address, but you're just working out of your home and you go do your consulting work or whatever. Or somebody providing professional service, financial service, you know, financial advisor or an accountant or somebody operating. Maybe you have people over to your home once in a while to do, like, what is, what is the code look? How does, how do things operate differently for those three very similar looking categories? Because I feel like there are differences there.
Yeah, so I, this is where I, our suggestion and what our current code kind of differs from what the, you know, APA approach to it is. So APA, you know, your, your, you know, lawyer that works from home but is, his law firm is downtown. That would be this category A. Whereas potentially that category B where all of his, you know, all his, all his files and all of his clients come to his home for, you know, for purposes, that would be the category B. As far as our current code, all of that would be the same category where there's not any sort of permit involved. So anything, anything that meets these criteria would fall under, you know, the current one umbrella. And as far as our, you know, kind of suggestion of potentially doing this, you know, only two categories, one would be all of those are in that category A together. So whether, yeah, so whether you're working from home in the, you know, the true sense of your employer somewhere else or you're your own employer and you're working from your home, those would all be this category A.
And again, I think you mentioned this earlier, but I think it would be very helpful to be explicit about work-from-home situations since the pandemic. You know, lots of people are just, you know, making a blanket of, you know, what's absolutely okay and making.
And that's pretty much what the best practice says we should be doing, just to make sure that there's no question. Because what I think everybody always has to understand is that the two people sitting here that are revising the code may not always be the person interpreting the code. And so sometimes you want to make sure that these things are just spelled out explicitly so that there could not be someone that says, well, it, it doesn't say that you can. So that might mean that you can't work from home or, you know, that's kind of the way code can work is you want to make sure that whatever rules you're putting in place are very explicit. So that someone can't come back later and say, well, this doesn't mean that to me. We want to make sure that it's very clear. Work-from-home is allowed. We, we kind of go back and forth on this when we talk about it, but I mean, that's, that's what the best practices say. We should make it very explicit. That work-from-home scenarios, any event, even, even not in the event of a pandemic, but it came as a result of one, that they should be just noted in there that they are permitted, expressly permitted.
Oh, one other, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just had one other thing about like auto repair. I know, at least in my neighborhood, small homes, enormous garages. And there's a lot of people that, I don't know if they're just doing it for their own vehicles or if they're, you know, selling some of those services, but I think there's a big difference between that and having eight cars lined up in the front yard ready to get the transmission replaced. You know what I mean? So I don't know if there's some nuance to be added to that.
Plus, one thing for that Aaron too is the noise level. It's huge. I mean, if you start repairing cars.
Oh, yeah. Well, I want to be able to work on my own car in my garage, one at a time. Or could I work on my buddy's car? You know what I mean? And using an impact drill, you know, whatever. So I'm just, there's some nuance there that I think, again, blanket exclusions are probably more dangerous than blanket inclusions.
Yeah, I think it might be useful, though. Go ahead. I think it might be useful to go through the current regulations, the prohibited uses and see if there's any of those items that, any of those prohibited uses that we would like to say, hey, that should probably be a, an okay use. And the one that I'm looking at is the barber's hair, hairdresser's cosmetologist. My ex-wife, you know, we lived in Highland Ranch and we had three different homes and we always built a salon for her so she could stay home and be home with the kids, but still have the ability to have her career and, and, and make some money for the household. So maybe we should start at the, at the top and of the prohibited uses and go through it and, and have some discussion around, around those points and, and see if we can't come up with something that might make more sense for current times.
Yeah, but I don't necessarily want to, you know, go in a different direction. I agree with that. The, I think it sounds like, you know, that's one that you guys singled out too, the, you know, barber shops and, and all of that. I, I'm not entirely clear. We keep, there, there's these references to the performance standards. And then we have the excerpt from the code. Like, are those different things? What the, what are the performance? Like, where am I looking to see what those performance standards are?
Yeah, that might be, that might be a flaw of using planning terms too broadly. So these eight criteria that we talked about in the beginning, you know, so the, you know, being a resident, look like a resident. Your employment, one, only one non-residential employee, fifty percent of the interior space. These are the performance standards that we're talking about. So there's currently eight of them, which, you know, as Brian, I kind of said, it's the kind of broad net that, you know, that all the home occupations need to meet these requirements. So those are performance standards or criteria that we're talking about.
Okay. I think where I am right. Okay, um, I think where I am right now on this is in the interest of, yeah, flexibility, and I, I'd like to definitely consider, you know, taking out a couple of those prohibited uses. We've talked about the um, personal care and the um, potentially food and beverage. Um, and, you know, having those available under the right circumstances. I'm comfortable with that. To me though, I do think it might make sense to have a tier that requires additional process where it's a business that has people coming in to the business um, at, at any level. Um, but potentially, you know, you, I, I think it said the current code, you know, you can have one at a time, which is, you know, probably fine. But um, I think if somebody wants to do something like operate yoga classes out of their house, you know, if you have eight people coming to a residential location like every night, that to me should be something that requires a little bit more process than somebody who's a, you know, music teacher and has one or somebody who's, yeah, running a consulting business and does all their meetings at coffee shops or whatever, right? And nobody comes to the house. So uh, I'd like us to, to think about that. So taking out some of the specific things that are like automatically prohibited, but then keeping for those things that would require um, a change to sort of the, the use of the neighborhood, right? And, you know, people coming in for commercial activity into residential space. Um, you know, having that additional layer of process associated just to get more eyes on it and make sure people have the opportunity to comment and have their say.
Yeah, the, like, um, I, I'm surprised that uh, barbers and whatnot are, are on a prohibited list. That's kind of surprising to me. Because Quincy Barbers have been operating off of Quincy and Logan for ten years. So I'm not sure how that's, the, anything like, like a yoga class, you can't have a, uh, ten people parking in front of your house. But a barber or manicurist, a beautician, whatever, where you got one person that comes in and then they leave and then somebody else comes in and they leave. And you got one car or two cars at the max, you know, where they overlap, uh, where you're taking up space. But uh, like, like, like the example of a yoga class, that's, that's too much. You get, you got eight, eight cars. Parking is going to be an issue. If the neighbors start to complain, they're gonna, they're gonna, that's going to be the first thing they notice. Uh, if they get a lot of people coming in and out of there, it's either a, a drug place or a barber shop. And then a little more investigation. But it, where, where you got a lot, like I just said, a lot of cars is not available, not doable. But uh, one or two is, I'm surprised that uh, all those are on the prohibited list. That's barber, hairdresser, cosmetologists, beauticians, personal care, uh, stuff like that. Shouldn't be anything wrong with that.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, you know, as far as the current regulations go, I, I, I do think they have a pretty um, nice middle ground as far as parking is concerned. Um, where it basically says that um, you don't need to have additional parking or anything like that for this, um, but any parking that your, your uh, your use is going to generate needs to either be in your own garage, your own driveway, or in the space directly in front of your house. So potentially, you know, if you had a, you know, a hundred and fifty foot wide lot, maybe you could have a slightly more intense use than someone who's got a fifty foot wide lot. And, you know, potentially also for, um, you know, going back to, you know, the multifamily thing, if you don't have a, you know, you don't technically have a frontage of your own, you know, maybe that limits you back down to this, this one residence.
And in some of the studies that we've seen, the, the, what we call personal service uses, so like tutors or somebody, I know we don't have a lot of pools in Inglewood, but there are some folks that would like to operate like swimming courses in their backyard for two or three kids. They limit that number of participants in those classes to like two or three. And so that's just limited across the board, rather than go into these, these additional public hearings. So that's also a thought, that's, some cities just allow small classes, whether it's one or two or two or three, um, more than just the one, but not up to like eight or nine. So there, there's another way to create a performance standard for uses like that.
Well, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make a comment about something I'd sent you, Brian, about um, our ability to define um, some of the standards about signage, right? Because we do have a daycare that much to the ire of her, her, their neighbors, they have a, they're, they are allowed to have their sign that says they're a daycare and it, there it's within the sign, but it also says, no parking in front. Now, that, they can't enforce that because a resident can't say, you're not allowed to park here, it's for my business. But at the same time, there's nothing that says they can't have that sign. So the neighbors, and this is on South Fox Street, not too far from me. Um, like I have friends over, or if I have a, uh, if I have a guest or if there's a delivery, they think that they can't park across the street from my house. Um, and there is nothing code can do about that. So I would like this opportunity then to, if we uh, do allow uh, these businesses with their signage, to then be very explicit that, you know, you don't own that, but you, you can't put no parking on your sign. That's what I would say.
So, so the, do you want to take that one?
If you, if you would like.
The very interesting thing uh, about that is the federal government tells me that I can't say anything about what your sign says. Our code has to be one hundred percent content neutral after a Supreme Court case in two thousand and fifteen between Reed and the city of Gilbert or county of Gilbert in Arizona. Um, so we cannot regulate a sign based on what the sign says. Our code can only look at the size and construction and the placement of a sign, not about the content. So that does make a situation like that a very interesting situation. Um, we, we got the email this morning or yesterday, we started working with um, some of our other departments to take a look at it. But, yeah, it makes it a very hard regulatory situation when someone puts a sign like that in their yard. And then we unfortunately, if it meets our requirements based on the size and location, it can stay.
Fascinating, yeah, she is not popular in that neighborhood, but it's not enforceable.
I mean, there's, there's signs on golf courses that you're responsible for.
So, so with the election coming up, there could be some pretty weird signs out there. I don't see anything on noise. Uh, I'd like to see, I, I, I don't want a neighbor opening up a, a log carving chainsaw thing in his yard. Uh, I think noise should be a, a factor in there.
Yeah, so there is, um, in the current, so number seven on here um, is what our current code has for noise, um, which basically says if you can perceive the noise or, I guess perceived is not the right word, but if you can hear it or see it or smell it from outside the, the, the property lines, um, then that's, um, and, you know, in violation of this regulation. The tricky thing with if you start putting, you know, like decibel levels or, you know, certain like levels of that thing, it becomes a real um, difficult thing for us to regulate on because we don't have that equipment to, to, to measure a lot of these things. So it gets tricky if it's, you know, um, some, some, you know, you know, subjective number in the middle for us to look at. Uh, so yeah, so the current code has it basically where it just says, if it's, if it's past the property line, you shouldn't be able to see it or hear it.
I know from experience that that includes music.
I was gonna say, is there other nuisance ordinances, you know, that might be able to just be applied in any circumstance? I mean, I know whether or not my neighbor has a business going on, they certainly make a hell of a lot of noise that I'd prefer that they not, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah, I mean, there are, um, you know, decibel requirements in the code as far as noise goes, and there's different ones for commercial, residential, industrial properties. And yeah, and I mean, that kind of, you know, falls for our code enforcement department for, you know, people are creating nuisances for, for neighbors. Um, they're just, it's a, it's a, it's a tricky thing to uh, to measure.
Well, we're gonna take some time to consider this, right? Over the next month and then meet about it again. And there'll be, uh, you're gonna talk to neighbors at, at events and you're gonna talk to the Chamber of Commerce. Will there be something prepared for us at the next meeting, like a, a draft amendment, you think?
I don't know if we'll have a full draft of changes, more than we might have some additional information um, just that we've heard from the public and then take kind of the information that we're gathering from you all and synthesize it all together. Um, I'd like to have a draft. I don't, I can't predict the future of what the next three weeks are going to look like for us, um, going to the public and the chamber on how far they want to go. But, yeah, we would like to have another, at, at the very least, it'll be another presentation based on what we've heard and kind of where we think we might go. And you guys would all weigh in. And then we would come back for a public hearing where you would see the full draft of the changes uh, that you could weigh in on.
The park meetings are, what, what time are those? I didn't see a time on those.
I think it's four to eight, I want to say. Um, I can double check real quick.
I think no was first.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, um, I was just wondering, should we take the time to go through, um, per Eric's suggestion, going through these, what is it, the nine prohibited things? Just real quick and see what the comments on it now? Or do you want to wait until after we get more feedback?
I was gonna, I was gonna wait till, yeah, more feedback because we just got, we just learned this, this is our first introduction to it. We can all go home and think about it. Um, you know, give it some thought. I mean, you can run through it now, but I might change my mind about.
I think we should, I, that's my opinion, just go through this list. Because, yeah, just comments, that's my opinion.
And to answer Carl's question, the three neighborhood nights that we'll be at are June sixth, June thirteenth, and June twenty seventh, uh, from four to eight P M. June sixth is at uh, Jason Park, June thirteenth is at Bellevue Park, and June twenty seventh is at Cushing Park.
And do we know what staff members will be present there?
Um, you're mostly looking at them. Uh, Will and myself uh, will be there on the sixth. Um, let's see.
There, there's a new disclosure on the website I noticed today. Well, this is probably, you can answer this better, that basically says any of the activities in the city of Inglewood may have people on commissions or city council or boards and all that sort of stuff. And it's, they're just there just as people, they're not, it's not to be considered a meeting. There's a disclaimer now on the website, under the, on the meeting page.
And I don't know the full roster of all the departments, but I know that we've had PD there in the past. There have been South Platte Renew, Inglewood Utilities, Community Development. Our Public Works Department has had individuals there. Um, so there's generally a whole host of different, and then the individual um, staff members kind of rotate. So I think last year I went to three or four of them, but it was all because it was Code Next related. So I just went as, every week. This week, I know Will and I are going, I'm going once, Will's going twice, Eric Sampson will go twice. Uh, Brooke is gonna go once, I think Brad's gonna make an appearance at our tent within the next three or four weeks, so there'll be a few of us there.
So you guys seem to know what is needed on this or what we have and what we need. So what kind of, do you have any suggestions that we can kind of kick around and, and look at uh, before we come up with anything?
I mean, over the next few weeks, you might look at what other communities do um, as far as home occupations. The other thing, um, you do what's best for your community. I mean, I know that's a very hard uh, thing for me to give you as a, as kind of a recommendation or what to think about, but that's really it. You're doing, this is going to be the guiding rule for businesses run out of homes for the next X amount of years. So you've got to think about, um, I think the difficult thing is we have to start thinking about things that we don't know are gonna happen. Two thousand and twenty really changed how a lot of things operate and it changed a lot on how we operate as a city, at least from a planning sense. Um, and that we had to have more flexibility to allow businesses to operate in these different ways that we had never thought about before. So that's kind of the even harder part, is you're having to think about things that we don't even know that exist now. Like the last time our code was written was in two thousand and four. Well, this online Etsy craze didn't exist in two thousand and four. But we have rules that were already put in place that help regulate a business model that didn't really exist. So that was kind of the forethinking that they've had since then. Um, so that's kind of the thing that you've got to start thinking about is what kind of businesses we, do we not know about that may exist? Or what kind of businesses are kind of on the forefront that may exist? And how do we kind of regulate within that very broad net? Or do we allow this extra ability for those businesses to come in and request a public hearing be, before you guys? So I, I know that's not a very good, very good guidance. It's very difficult, um, which is why we're talking to you guys.
So what, what, one, it, it looks like it's basically formulated around a house and an A D U. But the city is building apartments like crazy, so the apartment factor is going to be in there. So, um, you don't, you can't control the parking in an apartment. And somebody, I don't know how that's gonna work. But that's, there's many, many more apartments now than there was and there's probably going to be many more in the future.
I, I think what we could do is consider the approach we want to take. We can look at this list and go down and think of every possible occupation that somebody could have at home and, and try to decide if we should allow it. Or if you would, go to the slide with the APA approach. What we can do is look at that same list and um, decide which one of these categories this is and, and ask ourselves if this is the approach we want to take going forward. Do we want to say, you know what, somebody who lives in an apartment who cuts men's hair and has one customer at a time, that would be low impact. Somebody who works on cars in their neighborhood, um, and will have more than one car on a very small lot, say the size of the lot, might be a C. So rather than take a dry run on what we want to allow and what we don't, what I think we should be thinking about is if this approach would work for our city or just leave things the way they are and maybe allow home barbers.
I like Brenda's suggestion because these are updated every X amount of years. So that way our code would also somehow get updated in, you know, city trends or businesses or whatever you want to call it. But I think it's good to, based on what Brian was saying, to think of the city of Alvin as well at some point. So I think these guys know supposedly what they're doing. So, you know, it, it would be good to, to follow these, these regulations as you're suggesting.
Right, and making this change to having category C where um, somebody who might have a high impact in their neighborhood would then have a hearing and would have to come. And um, when you, when there's a hearing, they have to put a sign out front that says, hey, there's going to be a hearing because I'm going to uh, turn my house into a farm. Um, that way the neighbors can say, wait, I do like this or I don't mind this. And they would have a say because I think those, that outdoor use is a, on the high impact side. We disallowed it this whole time, but I've actually been to a home near the alternative high school where they were, that was last summer and I bought some tomatoes from them. I didn't realize it was probably very illegal. I wonder if they did too. But anyway, that's the approach that I think we need to take. But if you, uh, I, and I think it sounds like everybody could agree right now that we can not disallow barbers much anymore, right? So with that said, uh, is there anybody else want to kick around any more of this? Or do we want to? do we want to think about this and then bring all this back for discussion, uh, when it comes up again?
Did you all wanna take a shot at going through the prohibited use list tonight? And kind of talk about the ones that you feel like may or may not?
It's a pretty short list, go ahead and put it up, because it's really, um, um, I, I would say this, put that list back up. Uh, does anybody agree that I think, um, a groomer could be, an animal groomer could be, uh, an exception to number one? Well, you know, when, I don't know if you have dogs, but typically, um, you can only groom one dog at a time. Yeah? That's what you said, though. You had said that it was a groomer, I think you verbally said groomers were excluded.
I don't think number one says groomers.
Applies to the groomer.
I don't think.
I, yeah, generally, we've considered that top one to be all, really, all animal care, um, you know, so we, we've been including, you know, a dog groomer in that, um, classification for really like the animal, like daycare and, um, that portion of it. Um, you know, whether that's too broad of an assumption could be something to be discussed, but, you know, kind of going back to the same thing of, you know, clarity, um, yeah, we, we have generally considered that number one to be any, any animal-related business.
It could be very, very, I mean, when, when I take my dog to the groomer, she's maybe got six dogs that she's already done, and they're sitting there, you know, barking and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, some do operate like that.
As people are picking up their dogs, they start all barking and, you know, so it's, I think, it all comes down to the, you know, the, the fine line between, okay, is you're just gonna do one dog, and then the dog goes away, or there're gonna be six or seven dogs after you've been working there all day, so.
I agree with you, Michelle.
Yeah.
I think that, that having any type of pet care, dog care could, could be a real nuisance for the neighborhood.
Well, it, it could be, and there's two types of things on this list. There's specific activities, and then there's impacts. Is there an approach that just focus on the impacts? The noise, the parking, um, you know, clearly the dangerous stuff of hazardous materials or illegal activities, but is there a need to actually exclude specific things regardless of the impacts? Right? Cause you, what you had mentioned is a bunch of dogs barking, waiting to be picked up. That's an impact of noise, not necessarily the activity of grooming a dog. So, I mean, I don't know if, if you guys have considered that type of approach of just looking at, you know.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll say there was something similar that was brought up during our discussions with council, and, um, one of their thoughts was, um, you know, if, like, take, uh, take a barber or hairdresser, for example, um, you know, you can't have somebody come to your house and, you know, you cut their hair for, for money, but if you cut your, your kid's hair, you know, you could do that, and that's, that's totally fine, that's not against the rules.
Even if your kid didn't live there and drove his own car over there to get it cut.
Right. Yeah, and so, you know, that's another thing to think about, it's like, do you have an issue if your neighbor's doing that, um, not as a business, just as, you know, part of their daily life versus as a business? Um, so that might be something to consider too, when looking at this prohibited use list of, you know, thinking about, um, yeah, the nuisance impact that they have, and if, you know, if they're there.
Or, um, one of the other things that we, we've seen, or I've seen, um, if animal grooming is prohibited to occur as a home-based use, what folks have done is create mobile grooming, uh, scenarios, where they can drive their van to your house, park in your driveway, cut your dog's hair, and then drive away. So from that perspective, what is the difference between allowing it in my home versus, you know, not allowing it, but allowing a van to pull up? And so is it the limitation of the number of animals?
I think it is.
Where you, you know, things like that, that's kind of, I think, maybe that's what Aaron is kind of talking about, is what is the performance standard that would allow something like that to happen, without just expressly prohibiting it and saying you can't do it? So, does it exist, or is that too much of a fine line?
Is, is there a way to say, just say if you're gonna do one of these prohibited uses, that you can, you know, get a conditional, come through and get a conditional use permit for that, or something like that, so we don't, so the hair splitting takes place on a case-by-case bit, you know, basis?
It could be set up that way. I think the way the APA best practices say is that prohibited uses would just be prohibited, and that any other use that just does not meet those eight criteria perfectly, like, say, um, you wanna have, I think you mentioned it, a yoga studio, but I want three clients at a time, then I would have to come to the commission for my, my, um, I don't know, special exception, I think is likely what we would call it, something along those lines, special exception to the home occupation standards. And now here's my special exception, I wanna be able to have three clients at a time. Um, but if we expressly prohibit any kind of animal uses, then no, there would not be another way for them to come, cause that's on the expressly prohibited list.
Under the current regulations, is there any kind of appeal process? Like, if I did apply to have a dog grooming business, and it was denied, and I said, but it doesn't say dog grooming, what, is there any kind of appeal process for that?
Yeah, so the, so anything that would be, so say if you had something on this list, and you, and you, and you wanna do it as a home occupation, um, it'd be considered what's called a use variance, which aren't, aren't allowed, um, similar to the same way that, you know, if an industrial smelting company, um, if, even if they wanted to apply for a variance to open up a business on Broadway, it'd be a non-starter, they couldn't even apply for the variance.
So there's no process?
Right. Our zoning board of adjustment is not allowed to see use case variances, so meaning, a use is not allowed in my district, I want it allowed, that process doesn't exist, the only thing you could do is a zoning case, like a request to rezon your property. Uh, the majority of lots in Inglewood don't meet the minimum threshold to go through a rezoning, um, by themselves, cause I think our minimum standard is like thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred square feet, it's a very big number. Uh, we've asked this question to our attorney's office too. If it might be like, would we consider an animal groomer as part of these regulations? That might be something that could be seen as an appeal to an administrative decision, which would go to the zoning board of adjustment? But again, it would be very, very difficult, um, for it to not be considered like a use variance, um, which the, the board of adjustment can't see. That's kind of why we felt like this additional criteria suits this set of rules right now, cause there is really not an out for people that meet seven out of eight criteria, there really just isn't. It's just, you meet all eight, or it's a hard no.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to, um, second a couple of things. Um, I, I agree with Aaron that the impact-based approach makes a lot more sense to me than specific occupations, because then you don't get into this, you know, does that list mean all animal occupations, or does it not, right? It's, it's about what is the impact of the specific business that you're trying to run, and how you're trying to run it. Um, I think in order to do that, you would probably have to broaden the permit requirements from what you guys have proposed, because you are gonna have to have more case-by-case determinations, but as I mentioned earlier, I'm in favor of that. I think I'd like to remove a lot of the specificity and, and, you know, but still have that process, at least for those middle-tier, um, requests. Um, and then to, to build on what Brenda was saying, or to second it, um, I'd like to see us remove any reference to the parking in front of your residence as part of what you can use for your business. You don't own that, and I think I would prefer not to, it, it suggests that that is part of your residence, if you are allowed to use it for your home-based business, um, and you don't. So if somebody, if you are operating a home-based business where people are coming and parking, you have to be aware that somebody else could come park in front of your house, and you can't do anything about that. And so i, if people are coming to your house, you have to have a place for those people to park, if they're coming, you know, in their vehicle. So, um, to me, I, I would suggest that we just remove that reference to street parking as part of this, part of the regulations here.
I have another idea, can you go back? I'd like to propose the reverse method, so which ones we would not touch? Cause I think there's a view in here that I personally would not touch and leave as is, like, um, number three, based on what we've all been talking about, and obviously requiring a state dealer's license, that, that's, that's a cutoff. Um, guns and knives and other weapons, I have no interest in having my neighbor use his garage as a storage unit for those things. And then, um, I'm sure that number nine was drafted because Pappy wanted to do moonshine in his backyard, and that could cause a, an explosion, but I'm sure, you know, manufacturer of wine these days, that doesn't seem to be an issue anymore, but maybe spirits and malt beverages might be, you know, so there's a science behind that, that might be a problem. And then obviously, miracle marijuana, I don't think anybody wants that situation too. So I think maybe if we went through the list and said, okay, these we're not gonna touch, and all these other ones, we can review as a, as a group, as a team.
I'd just make a quick comment, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the number nine is not intended that you can't just go brew your own homebrew or anything like it, but it's a business, so, um, I don't, you know, I don't, is that correct?
I mean, it's similar to making things to take to the farmer's market. You know, I, I've got a homebrewing kit, I've never sold it at a farmer's market, but it's, you know.
Right, so I mean, it's not prohibiting you doing it yourself, it's just if you're taking it and selling it, or having people come and buy it right from you, and then you'd have to have a liquor license, so, to do that.
Yeah, these regulations are for businesses, so, for sale.
Very good point, yeah. You know, I would be more open about the automobile service and repair if we didn't have, um, there was a situation, uh, not too long ago, where he had a business, and there were just so many cars lined up, like you said, and then the real concern was that he was pouring the oil into our sewer system. So if it was just like, it's, it's like this impact thing, just like a dog groomer, if it was just your garage, and you limited your auto body or repair to what you could fit in your garage, then I would be more open to this automobile repair at-home thing. But, you know, that's just that, we don't seem to have, I would hate it to be an enforcement nightmare, and then, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's my thoughts on that.
We certainly do, cause we're the folks that have to enforce the zoning code. Um, so the, one of the things that we've got kind of built into the art processes the way they exist, is if we did, went the special exception route, and these, um, additional uses need additional review by staff, they need approval from Planning and Zoning Commission, um, they would be reviewed by all of our staff members that review any other project. So, uh, in things like where somebody might be dumping oil down our sanit, our, um, our, um, yeah, our sewer lines, or our, um, our water lines, or anywhere else, South Platte Renew is involved in those reviews, so they can talk about anything that might need to occur. Um, and that's the other thing, if, if there's items on this list that come off, we're gonna work with our other departments to make sure that there's no unintended consequences of our choices that are gonna inherently hurt somebody down the line in one of those departments, where they have to come back and overly regulate a business that's occurring in the home, cause that's not what we want. So, once we get kind of an idea of which direction you guys wanna go on these prohibited uses, and that may be where all these came about, is they came about, you know, sometime, I think in the forties, our uses really just said, you can be a surgeon, but you can't provide surgery, or you can be a doctor, but you can't do, or a dentist, but you can't do dentistry. You know, it was very limited, like, you can be a doctor, a lawyer, a, a surgeon, or not a surgeon, a doctor, a lawyer, um, an artist, I think was one of them. There were like five allowances for you to work in your home, and that was it. Um, and then they kind of evolved over the years to what we have. We don't know what the whole evolution was, um, we just know what we see, um, nationally, and it's all very similar. So yeah, we wanna make sure that if y'all choose something to take off the list, there's not gonna be an unintended consequence for like South Platte Renew, or for our utilities department, or for Public Works, or for the Building Division, um, cause they sit next to us, and so they tell us every day if we messed up.
Another approach too, is thinking of the type of customers or clients that these businesses attract, because I don't wanna discriminate, but some of these businesses can, can attract a certain crowd that you obviously, you know, might be concerned about too, so, but.
Can you, can you give an example?
Well, for example, you know, um, like guns, knives, and other weapons, sometimes you might get the wrong neighbor, or the wrong person coming to shop at the neighborhood store, because it leads to other, you know, um, types of businesses, like drug trafficking, or maybe somebody's pissed off at somebody else and just stops by, grabs a gun, and goes shoots a neighbor or something, you know? So I think that's, again, it, it goes back to the impact of what that'll lead to in the future.
I just wanna be clear about food and beverage services. We, because of Colorado health laws, we're limited by what we could allow anyway, is that what, you said something about refrigeration, like, nobody could have a catering business, or what about a canning, uh, just canning vegetables?
Cottage food laws allow certain things to occur in the house without making commercial changes and upgrades to your kitchen. If our zoning code allowed a restaurant to operate in a residential neighborhood, they could operate there, they would just have to meet all of the health code regulations and building code regulations, like, if our zoning code said a restaurant could, you know, you could take a house, turn it into a restaurant, yeah, you'd have to go and re, rehabilitate the home to meet commercial kitchen requirements, you'd have to have bathroom requirements and all that other stuff. This is really geared towards just, the commercial cottage food laws are geared towards a home, staying a home, and people being able to produce certain food products, like baking and things inside of it. So, I mean, we could write the rules however we chose to, um, I don't know that anybody's anticipating a restaurant being operated in their neighborhood, um, so that's kind of, one of the reasons we wanna just make sure that one's really clear. Cause right now, somebody looking at it might say, well, I can't do anything food-related, cause food and beverage services is prohibited. Well, that's not technically true, it's just prohibiting this one broad use type in our use table that is food and beverage services. Cottage food laws are completely legal.
Okay, but we can't make salsa.
I, I wanna say that's one of them, don't quote me on that one, but I'm pretty sure salsa's one of the ones that you can't make for sale. You could make it for yourself, yeah. I think where you're, where you're running into the, the, there's certain things that you can do in your house, when you're doing them for yourself, it's kind of like cutting your own hair. Uh, I haven't paid a barber in probably fifteen years to cut my hair, um, so I can cut my own hair in my house, I just couldn't cut everybody else's and charge you and open up my own business. So the same thing, you can make salsa in your house, but you couldn't make salsa for sale, for a business. And I think salsa's on that list, I believe it is, but.
Oh, per the cottage laws, or per our regulations?
Cottage laws.
Okay, cottage laws kind of.
So they're totally separate.
So it's not really worth going down the rabbit hole of number five because of the cottage laws, really?
Yeah, I wouldn't go down there and start saying, you can make this and not this and do this, we just wanna reference, the state has these rules, we wanna allow what the state allows, um, rather than, you know.
Plus, that goes back to the updates too, cause the cottage law, the cottage laws are also updated based on regulations, like Brian says, so it'd be par to par.
I, I think this conversation really goes to why we should try to get less specific about all of this. Um, I think, you know, yeah, in, instead of prohibiting food and beverage service, you just say, you can't operate a commercial kitchen because the, in, the need to modify the residence would violate the requirement that it still look like a residence. Like, if you have to put, you know, commercial kitchen ventilation on your house, that doesn't meet that specific impact-based requirement. And, you know, when you're talking about firearms, or you're talking about liquor, you just reference out to other types of regulations and say, if you can meet the requirements, you know, you, you can't be a licensed firearm dealer out of your house, because we say you can't, you know, have that kind of licensed profession out of your house, you know, whatever it is, but I think there's ways to do this where it's not. You don't have to, um, you know, you don't have to go through these specific things, because there's these other external rules that will do the work for us, and so that's where I'd like to see us whittle the, the list down overall.
I will say the, the one thing to keep in mind with that, a, a lot of times, um, when it comes to other departments and things like that, the, it's not so much that you can't, it's the quantity of changes you need to make, or what's gonna make it cost-prohibitive. Um, so, yeah, like, like, you know, the auto, automobile repair, I think is like a big one, where, you know, in South Platte, it's probably gonna say, you need to put a gravity grease interceptor in, like. grease interceptor in, like, you know, but if you can do that and hide it inside, you know, keep that inside your garage, you know, if this isn't in there, that potentially, you know, does leave that door open for it. So, um, yeah, I mean, as far as our regulations currently for the performance standards, it's kind of the, you know, does it quack like a duck kind of situation, where does it look like a house on the outside? Um, so, yeah, keep that in mind, I, I get what you're saying, though, that, you know, a lot of these, I think, do kind of fall in that, where it's like, they, they could meet the performance standards if you, if you let them go through.
Um, I'd, I have a question just on background. I mean, the direction from city council, is the idea here to remove unnecessary barriers for people having a home business? I mean, I think for the economic development aspects, the business development aspects, the personal and community wealth-building aspects, if lots of people have started very successful profitable businesses out of their garage, you know, Apple computers and Dell computers, they started in garages, is that the sense of, like, we don't want to be more restrictive than necessary? Is that kind of the?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, when we discussed the same, uh, presentation with them, they had pretty similar opinions that you all hold as far as, you know, looking at this list and maybe taking some off of it, and then making overall these regulations less restrictive. Um, that was kind of the opinion we got, um, the general kind of s, one, one paragraph summary of what, uh, their opinions were as well.
If I recall from that city council meeting, a couple people spoke, um, in favor of trying to get their business off the ground, and one of them was a glass blower. So, I mean, when we think about this, that's why it's really hard to define regulations, and we should be thinking about impact. I don't know what the impact of having, living next door to a glass blower is. But I'd be really interested to hear that hearing.
I could talk about that one. So, that was a, a case that was sent to us by code enforcement, and the, the individual was operating a glass-blowing business in their garage. Um, we sent them a notification, they said, oh, our, our bad, we'll stop, and they actually moved to a commercial facility. Um, but they had done some work in their garage to be able to operate a facility, a glass-blowing facility, they offered glasses, they offered parties, um, and no, I don't know, we had not received any complaints about the business, we didn't know it was there, um, until one of the code officers reached out to us. So, a lot of times, we don't know that these things exist, either until there's a complaint from a neighbor, or if a code enforcement officer, um, witnesses something and sees a business operating, and then contacts us, and then we reach out to the, the proprietor of the business.
I'm, I'm all for Noah and Aaron's suggestion of trying to look at the impact and make it more broad and less specific, but I also don't want to put you in the position where it's broader, and that you have to sit there and try and argue with customer, you know, customers or people who wanna open these businesses, I want it specific enough so that you can just say, no, it says you cannot do this. So, let us know when we're kind of putting you guys in a bad spot, as we have further discussions about this.
And part of what we do, um, with Finance Group, we've worked with them on, you know, their, their business license side, what we would like to have is whatever criteria or performance standards we create, um, they're, um, attached to that business license, and someone has to acknowledge that they will meet all of these criteria, and then if they fail to do so, we can work through Finance to, um, you know, work with them, to actually bring them back into compliance, or if it requires us to go with a notice of violation route, we're happy to, we, we're not happy to, but we will do that, um, if we have to. So, part of this is also helping us build relationships with these business owners, so that we can help them stay in compliance and not get in trouble, um, if their neighbors contact us. Um, one of the ideas that has come up out of this has been, um, in some cities, and this is Airbnb-related, but I'll, I'll get there, um, in some cities, if you operate a short-term rental, you're required to provide notice to your neighbors, so your neighbor across the street, and the two people on either side, and the person behind you in the alley, if they have an alley. Um, and all that is, is really your contact information, and who the, who the operator is, so that if they have an issue, the first level of compliance is to call the business owner, and to ta, tell them, hey, you're, you know, your folks are parking in my driveway, or y'all are being too loud, before they ever call the city. And so, it also kind of helps keep a lot of that quiet, because most, in most cases, I can tell you, I'm a planner, the first person to complain is somebody really in your immediate vicinity. Um, so, that's kind of where that comes in, and, and that's something that we can look at, too, um, is if you're gonna operate one of these businesses, you have to provide a notice to everybody, just, you know, either across the street, behind the alley, next door, that gives them your contact inform, immediate contact information. That's the other thing that we hear a lot of times, is, I don't know my neighbor, I've never met my neighbor, um, you know, I don't know how to get ahold of them, um, so that's, that's another way we can take a look at this, is, it's not necessarily performance-based, but it's helpful to just have that immediate contact info, so if there is an issue, I'll call you first, before I'm gonna call the city and have the city come out and enforce something.
Well, that's great that you're building these relationships with the, with those businesses, because, like you said, you know, I mean, Apple computer, I mean, there's a lot, we wanna encourage people to have their businesses and be entrepreneurs, so it's good to have that relationship, that's great.
And that's where the, um, Chamber of Commerce and Darren in our department comes into play, is the, one of the ideas that council challenged us with was, well, how do you transition a home occupation out of the garage and into, uh, a brick-and-mortar business, and one that we wanna keep in Inglewood? If these businesses are fostering here, we wanna keep them here, so how do we, what does that transition look like? And so, we're working with Darren and the chamber to kind of map out what that transition would look like, if somebody would, we hope everybody outgrows their, their home occupation and into a business that we can keep here in Inglewood. Um, we don't know that that's all gonna happen, we sure hope it does, uh, but we wanna have a clear roadmap of how do we get them there, and who do they work with to get out of that?
Out of all the businesses in Little, or Inglewood, how many, what's the percentage of, that have, or have a license?
What's the percentage of businesses that have a license?
That have a license, that, that, like, there's, uh, like, you say the glass-blowing place, that you didn't know anything about it? Uh, how, there's probably lots and lots of places that sell things out of their house, uh, that don't have a business license, is, do we have an idea of how many?
No, um, if we did, we'd be issuing a lot of violations. I mean, it's hard to know what we don't know.
Yeah.
So, if we don't know that they exist, we don't know what that percentage would be of ones that don't exist. Um, I could say, I think, what do we figure, the home occupations is roughly about 10% or 9% of all business licenses in the city? And so, it's a very big number, uh, currently.
Okay, um, it's 8:10, do you guys wanna carry on, or do you wanna, um, move on to staff's choice? Shall we move on to staff's choice? Okay. Uh, do you have anything, Brian, or, um, I'm sorry, was that Walter? I'm sorry.
I don't have anything for staff's choice.
You don't have anything for staff's choice? Okay, uh, attorney's choice, attorney, hello, there you are.
Nothing for me.
Okay, um, commissioner's choice, I, I don't have anything, but I'll go around the room. Uh, Stefan, do you have anything for us tonight? Michelle?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Right on. Carl?
I should be opening a kite-selling, uh, business, it's with the weather we've been having.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see around the corner there.
I have nothing further.
Aaron?
Just welcome to Noah.
Right on. Noah, welcome.
Um, I just wanted to note for everybody that the state passed the, uh, bill that would remove the ability of cities to impose minimum parking requirements, uh, starting mid-2025. Um, so, um, as we are looking ahead, um, you know, I'm, I think, uh, even over the next year, if we're, you know, seeing PUDs come through, we should be thinking about that that's the direction that the state would like us to go, um, and, uh, thinking about how to, how we're gonna implement that for Inglewood, so, something to keep an eye on.
Just a caveat on that, we can still enforce minimum parking requirements, there will just be certain areas that we cannot enforce minimum parking standards.
Right, yes, it, it was dialed back from the full ban to close to transit, and yes, other requirements.
But you all will likely, um, we are working on a, um, a work session for council that will talk about all of the bills that have just been approved by the state government, um, and will bring it to this commission, too, because all of those bills, uh, result in changes to Title 16, what has, which has to come to both Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, um, so you'll have a whole host of, uh, changes.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Did House Bill 1152 pass yet? Do you know?
Which one is that?
That's about 80 uses and so forth.
Yes, there was a bill related to, uh, accessory dwelling units that was approved, there was a bill related to minimum occupancies around transit hubs and transit stations and centers and routes that was approved, um, there's a bill that no longer allows cities to, um, define occupancy based on familial relationships, so now it has to be based on things like property maintenance code, um, parking requirements bill, um, there were some other bills that don't necessarily affect us, but home occupations and HOAs, there were, there was quite a few, uh, bills that were approved this last session, that are kind of affect the way that we do business here in town.
It's too bad we didn't just wait, right, for the state to, never mind, we put ourselves through a lot of pain, didn't we? All right, well, that, if that's all we have, then we're adjourned. Right? Okay, thank you.